Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for January 14th, 2014. I'd like to ask to have Pastor Penny Johnson come forward from Old Crest Church of God to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Good evening, everyone. Father, we thank you tonight for your great mercy and your great kindness and your power that took us through 2013. Now, we're asking, Lord, to take us through many more trials and tests and triumphs in 2014. I ask your blessing upon this city commission and the city people around the city and those, Father God, who have a heart for your city. We ask a blessing upon us all for health and prosperity in 2014. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Well, before we get into the meeting proper, we have the pleasure of a number of representatives from our Sisters Cities Board and a number of our students, I believe, that participated in our recent October Sister Cities Exchange.
Mayor, would you like roll call?
Oh, we could do that first.
Okay. Commissioner Turquess?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rinzmasipiga?
Here.
Thank you.
Now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So as I was saying, we have representatives from our Sister Cities organization here this evening. Was there someone coming forward to address us? Please take the poll in, and if we could have your name.
My name is Pat Donahue. I'm currently president of the Muskegon Area Sister Cities Board of Directors. This year marks our 20th anniversary of our relationship as a sister city with Omuta, Japan, which is our sister city in Japan. And one of the things that we have done over the years that I think is probably the most important thing that we do is that we facilitate student exchanges where students from Muskegon go to Omuta and stay with families and students of their age and vice versa. Students from Japan come here and stay with families here in the Muskegon area. And last October, we had 10 area high school students that went to Omuta, stayed with families there. And I know we have very limited time. I'd like to tell you more about it, but I will tell you that they represented the Muskegon area extremely well. We were very proud of them. And most of the students that went are here tonight, so I'm going to ask each one of them to quickly stand up and introduce themselves. And the last student, Landon, will introduce himself, and he'd like to share a minute or two of the experience they had.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for inviting us this evening.
Absolutely.
Okay. Quick, run it on time.
I'm James Seitzma. I go to Western Michigan Christian High School.
My name is Crystal Vasquez, and I attend Muskegon High School.
I'm Larry Fisher. I attend Muskegon High School.
I'm Joanna Schler. I go to Super High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Landon Fortenberry, and I attend Reese Focker High School.
Landon Bonnup, here briefly, somebody from California.
Greetings, my fellow peers and members of the Sister Cities Commission. From October 17th to October 26th, students from the Muskegon District and I became immersed in the vibrant, distinctive Japanese culture. For some of us, the duration of the trip seemed interminable and gave us an appreciation for home. But for most of us, the trip was enlightening as it broadened our perceptions of the world beyond the confined borders of Muskegon, Michigan. For the duration of the trip, we interacted with the Japanese youth by visiting local schools and participating in local activities. Some of the activities we partook in were cooking classes and ceramic classes. I remember vividly how thrilled and hospitable the Japanese students had been towards us. The classroom experiences were remarkable. I was amazed by how well the Japanese students received such foreign guests, such as ourselves, in a warming manner. As we walked through the halls, the students would accost us and wave in an amicable manner. The girls would blush as we toured around local high schools. I can recall a few of us returning the warm welcome by giving the young Japanese ladies hugs. James? How can the Japanese, who live halfway around the world, be so kind to extremely different people such as ourselves? The answer is because they possess understanding of the American culture. I believe the principal objective of Sister Cities is to promote understanding amongst Americans towards the Japanese and vice versa. Our differences should be appreciated and not despised by prejudice. Sister Cities is contributing to global peace by making the world smaller. Each of the students, including myself, stayed with a host family. The families were generous towards us. They showed many of us the touristic points of Omuta and treated us as if we were their children. While being great entertainers, many of the families were informative teachers. The nine days in Japan gave us the opportunity to learn basic phrases in Japanese and absorb knowledge. Our final day in Japan, we exchanged our goodbyes to our families and showed our appreciation of their hospitality by saying famously "Arigato gozaimas," which means "thank you" in Japanese. We formed bonds with our host family that will always remain. For many, the day of our departure was undesirable, and for some, it even brought tears. The Sister Cities Commission is responsible for connecting the world and promoting peace through understanding of cultures. On behalf of the students who participated in this nine-day exchange, I feel obliged to say thank you. Thank you for the exceptional opportunity you have given us.
Well, to you, Mr. Donahue, to all the students, thank you for your hard work and your fine work on the Sister Cities Board, and to all of you that acted as ambassadors of the greater Muskegon area, thank you for extending our best to our brothers and sisters in Japan and expressing the best in ourselves here in greater Muskegon as well as the United States. Again, thank you. Congratulations on a job well done, a job that you continue to do, and that peace and that togetherness that you experienced together as a group and you shared in Omuta, continue to share that here at home as well. Thank you, and congratulations. Absolutely. Anybody else that has another commitment, you can boogie, 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 or you can hang out. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the December 9th Commission Work Session Meeting and the December 10th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Deficit Elimination Plan for Neighborhood Stabilization Fund Finance, summary request. At June 30th, 2013, the City of Muskegon Neighborhood Stabilization Fund have a deficit balance of $38,767. Act 275 of the Public Acts of 1980 requires that the city file a deficit elimination plan with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Staff is requesting adoption of the Neighborhood Stabilization Elimination Plan and Resolution. Staff recommendation, adoption of the Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution. SafeBuild addendum to Professional Services Agreement, Planning Economic Development, summary request. The City of Muskegon has contracted with SafeBuild to provide building and property inspection services. Currently, there are two separate agreements with different termination dates. In order to remain consistent, there are three changes recommended to the agreements. The first is to permit SafeBuild the use of city telephone and internet services for a monthly annual fee. The second is to use the same termination dates for both the building and rental environmental co-compliance agreements. The third is to allow SafeBuild to use the city's BSNA software as well as the Alpha software. Staff recommendation, to approve the addendum and authorize the mayor's signature. SafeBuild inspectors authorization to issue citations, planning economic development. Summary request. The City of Muskegon has contracted with SafeBuild to provide building and properties inspection services. This responsibility includes the necessity of issuing citations. Since state law specifies that only local authorized officials may issue civil citations on behalf of the municipality, it is necessary to appoint the SafeBuild inspectors as local authorized agents with the power to issue municipal citations and municipal ordinance violation notices. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution authorizing SafeBuild inspectors to act as local authorized agents. Liquor license request, Rackets, 446 West Western Avenue, Commission approval for use of city-owned property, public safety. Summary request. The Muskegon Public or Police Department has received an application for temporary authorization from Downtown Pinnacle Properties, doing business as Rackets Downtown Grill, for a charity volleyball event scheduled for January 30th, 2014 to February 1st, 2014. The liquor license request is to include the volleyball court area, which will be located on Western Avenue between Third and Fourth Street. The State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission is asking for local commission approval for use of the city street before the license is issued. This is a repeat event, and the Muskegon Police Department finds no reason to deny this request. Staff recommendation, approval of the request. Quick claim city property to County of Muskegon, City Manager. Summary request, to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the quick claim deed to the County of Muskegon for $1. The city law is currently being used as parking by county employees and will continue to be used as parking. Staff recommendation, to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the quick claim deed. Title VI Nondiscrimination Plan and Limited English Proficiency Plan, a affirmative action. Summary request. A Title VI plan was developed to adhere to nondiscrimination requirements that shall be met prior to the receipt of or upon entering into a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for Federal Highway Administration Funds. The City of Muskegon currently does not have a Title VI Nondiscrimination Plan or Limited English Proficiency Plan on file with the Michigan Department of Transportation compliance. Compliance with the federal and state civil rights regulations is mandatory, and it is our responsibility to ensure that, as a recipient or sub-recipient of federal highway administration dollars, we have a Title VI plan and a Limited English Proficiency Plan on file with the Michigan Department of Transportation prior to the receipt of federal funds. Staff recommendation, approval of the City of Muskegon, Title VI Nondiscrimination Plan and Limited English Proficiency Plan, and authorize the mayor and staff to sign and place on file with the Michigan Department of Transportation. Approval of Realtor Procurement Bid for CNS, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to approve Green Ridge Realty as our Realtor and listing agent for the City of Muskegon CNS properties for 2014. The procurement bidding process conducted in November 2013 resulted in an unacceptable bid offer. Staff recommendation, to approve Green Ridge Realty as a Realtor for the Community Neighborhood Services Office for the 2014 year. Vacation of Nim Street from Brunswick Street and Vulcan Street, Planning Economic Development. Summary request. New Kirk Electric at 1875 Robert Street is requesting to vacate the portion of Nim Street between Brunswick Street and Vulcan Street so they may combine their main facility with their other property at 1975 Vulcan Street. Staff recommendation, staff recommends vacation of the street with the condition that all utility easement rights be retained. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended vacation of the street at their December meeting with the condition that all utility easement rights be retained. Vacation of Vulcan Street south of Nim Street and north of Keating Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summary request. New Kirk Electric at 1875 Robert Street is requesting to vacate the portion of Vulcan Street south of Nim Street and north of Keating Avenue. Staff recommendation, staff recommends vacation of the street with the condition that all utility easements rights be retained. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended vacation of the street at their December meeting with the condition that all utility easement rights be retained.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items that you would like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner?
I would like to remove item D.
That is, D?
D. D, as in dog.
Got it. Any others? Not, or entertain a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda, except for item D, SafeBuild inspectors authorization to issue citations.
Support. It is moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus item D. Any discussion? Yep. Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve the attached resolution authorizing SafeBuild inspectors to act as local authorized agents.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Turquess, supported by Commissioner Rinzmasipiga, to approve the resolution authorizing SafeBuild inspectors to act as local authorized agents. Commissioner Turquess?
Issuing citations mean that there's a fine or some remuneration that's going to be owed by the person receiving the citation. And this, I believe, applies to just the building and property inspection services, which is in the limitations of SafeBuild.
Probably Kathy can explain a little bit more about the reasoning behind it. I noticed she was over there waiting to come up.
I thought maybe the city attorney would handle it, but...
Why, good evening, Kathy.
I'll flounder around here, thank you. Hello, good evening. Yeah, the idea is, and if you need the city attorney to add on to this, but we did realize as we were going through this process that you have to be a city, basically, employee or appointed by the city in order to issue any of these citations. So it could be the rental housing, it could be, for instance, if we're denied access to go on a property and you have to issue a ticket to handle the situation if there's trash, tall grass, those kinds of things. So really, in any of the building issues as well, so any of those types of events that SafeBuild is handling for us, it would be much too complicated and expensive if we had to use our city employees every time they'd have to tell us. We'd have to get either our city attorney or one of our own, you know, our one inspector in our office, and they also have to testify in court, and it just would be a hassle to have to go that route. So let's the SafeBuild inspectors go ahead and handle it on their own.
Historically, over a period of time, some of these violations are no longer appropriate. Are we comfortable with what SafeBuild will be looking at, and we don't have some frivolous ones on there that should be removed?
Well, they'd only be dealing with anything that we had that they are currently dealing with right now, that we would be following up on. If we had had those, if we were still doing building inspections and rental inspections...
So you're saying we're current?
They're not doing any other types of ticketing.
But we're current with the list that's on the books?
Correct. I mean, that's, I suppose, subject to change at any time if we came before you and made changes to the ordinance and...
Is there an appeal process, or the person receiving the citation can appeal?
Yes, they complete not responsible, then there'll be a trial in front of a district judge. Okay, that's where we go. Yep. Okay. Any other questions for staff or input? Thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have unfinished business, please?
Appointment of Vice Mayor.
I make a motion to appoint Larry Spataro Vice Mayor for the next two-year term.
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Rinzmasipiga, to appoint Larry Spataro as Vice Mayor. Any discussion, please? Commissioner?
I've given very careful and considerable consideration on our selection of a Vice Mayor, reflecting on this matter every day for the past two weeks. Although I no longer consider seniority to be the deciding factor, my decision remains the same. Commissioner Spataro is the only person on this council whom I've seen appear at multiple different neighborhood associations, from Nims to Nelson and McLaughlin to Marshfield. He's out there already nurturing relationships between neighborhoods and the city. I encourage all of us on this dais to follow his lead in that regard, just as I advocate all residents of the City of the Muskegon to become active in their own neighborhood associations. These groups have great potential to improve our neighborhoods and our overall community. Meanwhile, even as seniority is not an overriding factor in my selection, Commissioner Spataro's 14-year commitment to this city as a public servant cannot be overlooked. Over that time, Spataro has gained a wealth of institutional knowledge and personally assisted countless people from all walks of life, regardless of whether they resided in his ward. All that said, I nearly chose to nominate Commissioner Hood, having gone back and forth each day since the organizational meeting. I very much like Commissioner Hood and have the utmost respect for him. At this time, I strongly advocate for Commissioner Hood's selection as chair of the Community Relations Committee. At yesterday's work session, Eric discussed how one gains experience in chairing meetings, which I believe can be accomplished through the Community Relations Committee. Additionally, I believe this committee is a much better approach than simply holding the Vice Mayor title for actually making City Hall more receptive and responsive to all residents in our community. Whomever is selected to chair this committee, I implore you to hold meetings in the different neighborhoods. If a concern is people don't feel comfortable coming to City Hall, as expressed by Commissioner Turquess and Commissioner German and others in our community, let's go to them, engage our constituents directly, and work collaboratively with them on the betterment of Muskegon for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turquess?
I would concur with what Commissioner Johnson has stated, and we have talked about this over the timeframe of a couple of weeks. We've had a lot of discussion. We've had time for the citizens to express their feeling on it. And I don't think this selection of Vice Mayor is an area that we should appear to be divided. I support the mayor's request, and I have known Commissioner Spataro for some 10 years. I've sat on him in the, not on him, but with him, on the Planning Commission, and two years on the City Commission, and all the good things that has been said about Larry are absolutely true. He really does his homework, and he does apply those skills to the boards that he belongs to. So I would like to encourage my fellow colleagues to approve the appointment of Commissioner Spataro as Vice Mayor and to do it unanimously with a seven to nothing vote, so that we do not appear divided.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner German?
You know, I look back and, you know, the first time we went through this process, and, you know, I gave it some thought before I even, you know, thought about not supporting the motion for Vice Mayor Spataro, who I have a lot of respect for, who I've known over the years I've sat on numerous subcommittees. And I just felt that at that time where Mayor, you know, gave us a call, I didn't get a chance to speak with him, but I think it should have opened some time, allowed some time for discussion, and it gives a little bit more transparency. And I stand firm on my decision not to support Spataro, Vice Mayor Spataro as Vice Mayor, you know, not that he can't do the job, he's done an excellent job. And it has nothing to do with division or race or anything that you have read in the media, because at that point in time, those issues was never discussed. My focus was vision and change, and it still stands for that. And you look at the Sister City group that just came in there, in here today, and you see students from all over, you know, different backgrounds, you know, white, black, Hispanics, Asian, Chinese, you know, you see that, and this is what this community is made of. And my vision is to have a governing body that reflects its community and its vision statement. So I'll be voting again. I stand firm on my decision not to support Vice Mayor Spataro due to the fact of I see that we should go forward and try something new, change and vision, not more of the same thing. And I feel when you do more of the same thing, you get more of the same results, and you get stagnated. Not saying that, you know, he has not done a good job. I take nothing from Spataro, and I know he knows that, but this is where I stand with my decision.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Hood?
I concur with Commissioner German. I have a lot of respect for Commissioner Spataro, and I agree with Commissioner Turquess that Commissioner Spataro does come to the meetings prepared, and he's probably more prepared than anyone. He likes to read a lot. But I also agree with Commissioner German that when you do more of the same thing, you get the same thing. And I just feel that, and I stand firm on my vote also, and for change.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd like to say one other thing, too.
You may, please.
Also, I'd like to commend Commissioner Turquess on the first vote, when he supported the fact that he was open-minded to, you know, looking at, you know, the process of change and what could happen. You know, I think that took, you know, a lot of courage, you know? Sometimes you don't have that constituent base that may not always agree, but I respect him for being open-minded, and, you know, as he thought through the process and, you know, whatever way you decide to vote, that's fine. But at the end of the day, we all have to work together to do what's in the best interest of this body of government and this community. So again, like I said, I'd like to give you also respect for, you know, standing up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I just wanted to make a comment. I struggled with the decision, too, and I don't know, I think it has been an issue, to be frank, about race, because that's what was presented when it was brought up to kick off this whole discussion. And so obviously, there's a racial element to this discussion, and it has to do with representation of our city, and so I think the discussion's been good, although it's hard. And I think that everyone would agree that we should have people that represent all of us at the city level and in symbolic positions or, you know, leadership positions. So I'm kind of torn about how to vote. I don't think it should break down on racial lines, because I don't think that...
I don't think it should break down on racial lines, because I don't think that represents the city. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner?
Thank you. When I got out of college and decided that I wanted to make Muskegon my permanent home, and there's very few of my classmates who made that same choice. I have many friends who've gone on and followed careers elsewhere. I came back to Muskegon primarily because, as I saw the young enthusiasm from the folks coming back from the sister cities, I have a love for this place. This is a great community. We do great things, and we tend to be our own worst critics. And when I was looking for a place to live, I wanted to be in a place that was integrated racially, economically, socially. And there weren't a lot of places in West Michigan where that was true. But that's true here in the city of Muskegon. And when I was looking for a home, I found the house I wanted in the neighborhood I liked the best, and that was in Nelson Neighborhood on Sixth Street. And I've been pleased to live there for 25 years. Over those years, I've had neighbors come and go, but this is what I've seen. My neighbors are mostly hardworking, good parents, who take care of their homes, who send their kids to school, and just want a quiet, safe neighborhood in which to live and raise their families. And those neighbors are white, and they're black, and they're Latino, but those interests we all share in common. And in the early 90s, after I'd been in my home for a few years, and I saw one of my predecessor in this position, Mr. Maholski, constantly attacked by absentee landlords for wanting to improve situations in my neighborhood, for holding them accountable, for ensuring that rental properties were livable and safe for the families that stayed there, I started to get involved politically, and I started coming to city commission meetings in support of my commissioner. Because I got tired of people who lived in Grand Haven and Fruitport and Kent County coming into the city of Muskegon and badmouthing people that we had elected to represent us and were doing the things that we had asked them to do. From there, my involvement grew. As the neighborhood association began to struggle, I was asked to take a leadership position in the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association, and I have been serving that organization in one capacity or another since 1995. We've gone through some tough times with that organization, but all in all, I think we've done more good than not in the community, and we have become a place where people who are black and white, working and retired, rich and poor, come together and break bread as neighbors and share their concerns and give back to make Nelson Neighborhood a better neighborhood. In 2000, after the 1990 election year, 1999, I was elected for the first time, and that was a hotly contested race. And Ward Three is not all white, it's not all black, it's not all Latino, and it's certainly not the West End. It is the center of the city of Muskegon. It goes from the lake shore and now includes the industrial parks on the far east end of the city. And through four subsequent elections, I have continued to serve that constituency, some of whom are very affluent, some of whom are very poor, but all of whom I respect, all of whom I reach out to, all of whom I listen to. Now, I am particularly gladdened, and however this vote may go, that's for each of us to decide as we cast our vote, that over the last approximately two weeks, it's not quite two weeks, well, about a week and a seventh, the number of people who've approached me, neighbors, friends, coworkers, who have offered their support to me, who have thanked me for the job that I've done and said, "We appreciate you and what you've done." As one friend said to me yesterday, "Continue to do God's work," and I appreciate that. And I think that's what we should all be about, because I ran for office to make this the best city we could be. I have no other ambitions. The position of Vice Mayor is one of basically a technical need to fill the chair of this body when the mayor's on vacation or calls it in. And I've happily voted for two African-Americans to be Vice Mayor, and I would, you know, gladly have supported this if it had been approached in a way that was not intended to be divisive. And I'm sorry, the way this was done has been divisive. The results speak for themselves, and I think that's unfortunate. So however this vote goes, I hope that we come together, we recognize we're all here for the same purpose, we all share the same constituents, we all have to reach across barriers and boundaries and represent all of the people who live in our respective wards or for the three newly-elected officials, the entire city. And that's my commitment to you, that's my commitment to the people of the city of Muskegon, and I will continue to do that regardless of the outcome of this vote. And I thank you for your patience and allowing me to have my say, and I hope that we can vote and move on, because we have much more important things to deal with ahead of us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner? Any other comments from the commission before we take the vote? Commissioner Johnson?
I would just like to say that, well, I don't stand with Willie on this issue. I appreciate and respect his motivation and where he's coming from, and that is our community being responsive, receptive, and inclusive. And I wholeheartedly agree with him there, and I'd like to see this commission, going forward, pursue that, including at the Community Relations Committee level. As Commissioner Spataro said, we have more pressing issues ahead of us, and I do believe those are discrepancies and inequality that exist in our community along racial lines that take more importance than the issue of who happens to be our Vice Mayor, who the vast majority of people in this city do not even know who our Vice Mayor is, couldn't call him by name, couldn't point him out in the lineup. But we do have discrepancies in this community and inequality that needs to be addressed, and I hope we all work together to minimize those discrepancies that fall along inequality in employment and income and educational attainment, and those are things that we need to address in our community.
Thank you. Any others? Commissioner, please.
You know, everyone could have an opinion, okay? But my opinion was, no, my vision and for change was based on facts, okay? When you look at overall community and you look at the core technology of this government, what is designed to do, you know, it's from public service, public service to finance, and then you look around that government and you see the environment. And you look at the demographics and you see demographics of Caucasian, 51 percent, African-Americans, 34.5 percent, Asians and Latinos, okay? Those are the people that impact and affect this community. And when I say change and vision and not more of the same, the only way you're going to get change is if you cut it off the grain, stir the water, and see what way the waves may go, but you got to step out there to get changed, because you're going to be in the same spot that you're in. I have not seen Muskegon grow over the years. And I'm not saying a Vice Mayor, this Vice Mayor could do this overnight, you know? It's just looking at the balance at a government level of the second and first in command, where it reflects the overall community as a whole, not just serving one population and one demographics. You know, for this experience, everyone up here is capable of being a Vice Mayor, you know? We were all educated, went to school. But my choice was, would have been for Commissioner Hood, who is a veteran, who served this community as an officer, who has a strong relationship with the community, who can identify with solutions and problems. This is the type of things that you deal with in this line of work, in this background. And I taking nothing away from Vice Mayor Spataro, because we all have our strengths and weaknesses. So, you know, for change, you have to have a vision, and without a vision, you perish. And I don't want to see that happen to this government or the city of Muskegon.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? No public comment at this time. This is a commission function. But regardless of where the vote goes, it's our charge to draw together and make sure that we don't go backwards, and we continue to flourish as a community, and we continue each and every one of us to reach out to our brothers and sisters and our neighbors. Something we ought to be doing whether or not we're elected officials or not, reaching out to our brothers and sisters and our neighbors and making our blocks, our homes, you know, the best place possible. So we're challenged, I appreciate the challenge. But I'm confident that each and every one of you I know, as individuals, do very much in the community, whether it's reading to children at a elementary school, or being involved with youth, or being involved in your neighborhood associations, being involved in your mission and your daily jobs that serve the publics. Each and every one of you are in a fantastic position to continue to grow this community and draw us all together as one people. Thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, a lot has been said, and that's good. But I would just like to see whoever is the Vice Mayor, and if it's Larry, that's fine with me, too. But I would like to see this commission do what we're up here talking about, and that's reaching out to the community as a whole and not just one part of the community, but the whole city of Muskegon. So, you know, like I say, talk is cheap. Let's put some of the power in that talk. Thank you.
And I agree with you, but in the same vein, remember, when you're making hard-reaching statements, that you don't want to discredit the work that people actually do and the work that, you know, has been done. You can always do more, and we must always do more. We can never be static, ever. And if anyone feels that they're not being reached, or if anybody feels that they're not being held precious, then it is up to us absolutely to set aside those fears or that perception. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Rinzmasipiga?
No.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business?
Towing contract, public safety, summary of requests. Proposals have been accepted for the towing contract with the city. This contract will go into effect on January of 2014. Proposals were submitted by the following companies: Ramos Towing, 2444 South Getty; ASAP Towing, 2486 South Getty; Central Towing, 710 Alberta; Reliable Towing, 1288 Ninth Street. Staff recommendation: The Director of Public Safety recommends the commission consider selecting Ramos Towing Services for a three-year towing contract to provide needed towing services listed in the contract.
Thank you. Commissioners, we had a lengthy presentation last night by our Public Safety Director, Chief Lewis, who outlined everything in detail and the rationale.
I'm sorry, I just didn't mean to interrupt. I was just going to make a motion.
You have to. I started talking too quick.
I was, and so we can begin to discussion, I would move that we award the towing contract to Ramos Towing Services for a three-year towing contract to provide the needed towing services as listed in the contract that was provided.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Spataro, seconded by Commissioner Rinzmasipiga, to approve the towing services contract with Ramos Towing for three years and to provide the needed towing services listed in the contract. Now I can start spouting, and I already did. Are there any additional questions for Chief you'd like to have fleshed out on this item?
I think we kicked the tires pretty thorough yesterday.
Yeah, very thorough. That's it? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Muskegon Lakefront LLC Agreement, City Manager, summary of request: To approve the agreements as submitted. Staff recommendation: To approve the agreements as submitted.
I move that we approve the agreements.
Second.
It has been approved by Commissioner Rinzmasipiga, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the agreement as submitted for Muskegon Lakeshore LLC. Discussion. Commissioner Johnson?
What were to occur if this entity defaults on the $25,000 payment?
Well, essentially, there would be a default of the agreement, and my, but the expectation would be that we would probably move forward with our, the original special assessment process, which was essentially...
We'd have to go to court for back taxes, too?
Yeah, it would essentially be back taxes, yeah, we would follow that process.
Okay, so there's nothing to stipulate in this contract that if they're defaulting $25,000 that we would then take possession of the property outright?
No.
Had that been considered?
No. And if you step back for a minute, we kind of got to this point a little bit before I started here, essentially the commission asked the city manager to work out an agreement with the group. What the goal was to, from this agreement, was to kind of raise the funds that would have existed had the two buildings that should have been built by the end of 2012 were built, and I think they estimated that at about $25,000 worth of property taxes a year. So that's where those payments came from. So instead of forcing them to build a building that maybe they weren't ready to build, we essentially came up with an agreement that allowed them to pay the equivalent of what that, with those property taxes, what that, and that's kind of where that came from. And the goal was to help them find a way to meet the requirements of the original development agreement. And there were, and you guys have copies of the current agreements. If you want copies of the original agreements from 2001 or 2007, I can give those to you guys, so you can have some more background in it. But I stuck a little timeline down in front of you guys there, which I've picked up on over the time that I've been here. And essentially, what the goal of the agreement is, is really to give them an opportunity to meet, to meet the criteria. So rather than kind of pulling the plug on the whole, I guess, smart zone development with the particular group that's sitting out, give them a little bit of time to work through their plan, you know, whether that happens to be the casino or some other sort of development, it gives them some time to do that. And my thought on that is, we do have, the city itself does have a number of irons in the fire, you know, development in the downtown area, and this will give them some time to work on that and maybe not put our focus on it for a couple of years. And at the same time, bring in the revenue that we were expecting to generate from that had the two buildings been built by the 2012 timeline.
You know, I don't know what the right thing to do here is. It just never dawned on me when this agreement first became before the commission, which is over a decade ago, that people would have such a hard time making money on waterfront property. But here we are. We're having to fund out of our general fund, which, as you well know, is hurting the bonds that paid for the Merrick Building, because there has been no development other than... that paid for the Merrick Building, because there has been no development other than one of the intended, I think, eight or 10 buildings of the Vida Nova development and the Department of Tool Office building. I don't foresee anything happening within the next two years. We haven't seen anything happen up to here, including during a period of time when banks were giving money away by the Bushelfold for people doing real estate development, which was really kind of the case until 2006, 2007. So, you know, I guess I'll go along with this, but we really need to bring some kind of resolution. You know, I don't want to be here two years from now, looking at being asked for another extension, oh, we're just, you know, a year or two away from this, or we're a year or two away from that. We have to get something going on this side. So, I'll go along with this, but this really has to be our last time. We really need people who have the wherewithal to do something and control of this property so that it's starting to generate some tax revenue, it's creating jobs for the people in this community, and it's generating the tax increments we need to pay off that Merrick bond. So, I guess I'm just really frustrated, I just need to let that out, so I don't, you know, lose my mind. It's the best of a bad situation, I guess.
Commissioner?
My question is about the amendment suspends special assessments until December 1, 2015, but they are going to pay an assessment upon execution of this agreement, and then on December the 1st. So, unless, you know, the amendment has to do with if they meet certain terms before December 1, 2015, but it looks like, I don't see how they want to pay it.
Yeah, it's, because this isn't, it's more of a payment. We structured as a payment, not a special assessment, so that $25,000 is a payment to us.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, for whatever reasons, the attorney represented us, that's what made the most sense for, you know, for that, and I won't pretend to know, to know all, you know, the rationale behind it. It probably has something to do with the way taxes are brought in versus special assessments are brought in versus the payment is brought in. And Department of Tool did not represent us on this.
Different firm.
And it's the same firm that has been representing the city on the smart zone for a number of years, and they had the background on this. And I, like I said, I kind of walked into the middle of it. The agreement was pretty well drafted. Over the last couple of months, we were just kind of tweaking out a couple of things that the two parties, you know, were trying to come to agreement on, and we were able to do that.
But they do agree to pay a payment upon...
Yep. And what I gave you was the original letter that their group sent us, outlining the three things there. And really, what we've done over the last couple of months was put that into a more formal agreement versus just having the letter.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, Commissioner Johnson?
Like you, City Manager Peterson, this tender agreement came about before my time on the commission, and I've seen it drag out for, as Commissioner Spataro said, a good part of a decade, if longer, failure to meet previous agreements. I'm a little concerned that we're extended again, and I'm concerned about us being left holding the bag in two years' time. I'm wondering maybe if the attorney might be able to expound on a situation if, say, two years from now, no construction has started, and the company's gone bankrupt. Are we left holding the bag? Is there any stipulation here that it says we automatically get the property if they go bankrupt, or...
That's essentially what it says, is that they'll either pay us that $500,000, or they'll convey title of the property to us.
Automatic.
Yeah, either or. Yep, one of the two will happen, if it's not, if the buildings are. And it kind of just defines in there what construction started is, purpose pulled, PUD, you know, approved, and things like that.
And they cannot transfer ownership to anyone else without defaulting on this agreement?
That's probably a good question. My guess is, my assumption would be if they transferred ownership, that the agreement would probably be, you know...
Go with it or be in default?
Well, and I'd hate to push this over to our attorney who didn't work on this, but my guess is it would, what this does is reassign another old agreement. So, my guess is, we would be back here potentially reassigning an agreement to the new owner or deciding as a group how we want to deal with that, with that agreement at that time. Yeah, the assumption is, if they were going to sell it, they would have sold it by now. They're working on a project, like Larry said, that they've been working on for a number of years. And my guess is that they're gonna, and they do have a representative here that could tell you a little more about it, but my guess is they're going to hold firm until they get essentially what they've been trying to...
And they current with taxes?
They have received an extension on their property taxes from the county, so they're not current, but they're working on getting them.
Okay.
But the agreement does require them to bring them current during the term of the agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Turnquist?
Has the Muskegon Lakefront LLC ever paid anything to the city during this 10 or 11 years? And number two question to part, the first statement says that they're going to pay $25,000 for the next two years. So, 2014, $25,000 would be due the city. At what point of time, what would that tax be due?
At the execution of the agreement. But when we signed, when we formally signed agreement with them, then a $25,000 payment will be made. So, you guys will authorize somebody, you know, the agreement to be signed, that the time it's signed, then the payment will be made. And I don't know if you guys want to have Mr. Warmington come up and speak to it, but if you followed the timeline here, you see that Lakefront LLC hasn't been the owner of it that entire time, this kind of moved through a couple of different hands in that time, although I think Lakefront LLC does have some connection a little bit with the Belmont Farms, who was a previous owner. But not, not having been here through the whole time, I don't have all that institutional knowledge, but what I've been able to pull together from the files is that, you know, they've only been involved, as Lakefront LLC looks like, since 2011.
Any other questions? Input?
I'm just trying to remember. I believe there was a fairly significant payment in, that was made as part of the agreement to convey the original agreement to the current owner or the current property holder. So, I don't remember off the top of my head, I want to say it was like $180,000, but I do believe there was a fairly substantial payment made toward the assessment at that time. And the agreement was, is that the balance would be waived if the two buildings were built, or, and the "or" ended up in the negotiations, that's the agreement in front of us.
Can I ask, would that be Belmont Farms or Lakefront LLC?
I believe that was Lakefront LLC who made that, but the former mayor can tell us.
Steve Warmington, 1524 Lake Shore Drive. That's correct, Vice Mayor. There was some dollars that were paid, and that was when the city, as I recall, also agreed to try to do the two starts by December of last year. This group, and comments that have been made in the past, the ownership group gets a feeling that people think they aren't doing anything. They're definitely meeting with people and trying to market that property. We certainly have a vision for what we want to see the property do, but we can certainly put people down there that fit the vision. And we thought we had, we had two people that were interested in doing something for those two starts at the city. One, I can tell you, was a convenience store, gas station, car wash, and the other one was a Mexican restaurant. Unfortunately for them, the traffic counts weren't good enough that they were willing to make the commitment in order to follow the timeline that the city had set up. And that's when we, the ownership group, approached the city with saying, hey, it doesn't make much sense for us to put up two buildings that could be empty down there. Why don't we take a look at paying what the property taxes would bring in? And actually, we kind of came up with a number that fell along with what we've, Department of Tools taxes were down there, and so that's why we are where we are today. We appreciate working with the city, and we're going to continue to work with the city. We are marketing that property. I want you to know that I don't believe any of the prior two ownership groups thought, just like you and I did, Larry, and the mayor, 12 years ago, that we wouldn't be in this position. Unfortunately, this is where we are. The first ownership group wanted to develop that piece of property as quick as possible. When we forced the issue there, we got a second owner in who had grand plans to do everything and marketed it to try to do it. Sometimes maybe we stepped on our own feet when we granted the Renaissance Zone to another 43-acre parcel was up the hill from them to try to redevelop our downtown. So, it's just a group of things that have led us to where we are. But I will let you know that this group of property owners has the best interest of this community in mind to bring jobs and to bring development and to bring people to this community, and we're very happy to continue our work with the city. And as soon as we sign the agreement, you'll have the first payment, and the second payment will be coming.
Terrific.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Community Relations Committee Recommendations for the Various Boards and Committees. City Clerk, summary request: To concur with the recommendations from the Community Relations Committee regarding appointments and resignations. Staff recommendation: Approve the recommendations of the Community Relations Committee from their January 13, 2014 meeting.
Mr. Turnquist?
I would move that we approve the recommendations of the Community Relations Committee from their January 13, 2014 meeting.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the recommendations of the Community Relations Committee from their January 13, 2014 meeting. Any discussions? Commissioner Johnson?
I would just like to make a call to the community to put your names in the hat in Town Bank. We need people. We need qualified candidates. We need anybody in the community, put your name in there. Come down to City Hall, fill out the form for Town Bank. We need people in the Town Bank so that we can fill these vacancies in the community. So, if you're interested, come on down. If you know a friend, a neighbor, a relative, encourage them to come down and put their name in the hat for the Town Bank. More the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business from the commissioners?
Just a quick report. I'd just like to say that I was able to represent the city at the groundbreaking of the new Muskegon County Jail today, and that project is now underway. I know it's not without controversy, but in the long run, having a modern facility that's safe for the people who are there, particularly the folks who are there just being held pending arraignment, who haven't done anything wrong, and the staff that have to work there, I think this will be a good, a good thing for the community, and certainly it will create a lot of construction activity in the middle of our downtown for probably the next 18 months. So, I was happy to be able to represent us there, and everybody was very happy. Dean Rossler even was smiling, our good sheriff, so it was good to see him in a good mood.
Thank you for representing us, because I was at another jail. On the day job. Anything else from the commission? Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission at this Abiata, you say you're representing a particular group?
I am president of Abiata and Abiata Associates.
Well, three minutes, then.
Let me know my time is up. Quickly, before I read my presentation, I just want to use a teachable moment. When an individual says, I'm going to vote in a certain particular way to show unity, it shows, you say to the people who are a minority vote, you create division, that's not fair. I think it's healthy that you had differences in your vote. Matter of fact, I congratulate you on that. Dear leaders, I would like to congratulate Mayor Galwin on his victory in the race for mayor of our fair city, and I would like to congratulate the two new commissioners, and I wish you well. My presence here this evening is symbolic of not only my interest in our city, but in alignment with Commissioner Byron's eloquent, imaginative statement recorded in the Chronicle addressing the issue of the vice mayor, when he said maybe it's time for us to reach out. I would like to echo in chorus, it is not only time to reach out, it is overtime. Your vote today, I wrote tomorrow, is more of an isolated opportunity, is also a simple statement of progressive thinking. It is a statement of willingness to be vulnerable to new possibilities and a new direction for our city. This simple vote will be a precursor to help define our new year. That includes a new city manager and two new commissioners. This vote is a major statement exposing the significance of diversity. Please let me explain what I mean by diversity. As a consultant in this area, often when we hear the word diversity, we minimize the width and the breadth of this word to gender and race. While both race and gender are significant, if we stop at those labels, we are discussing the issue of a new mayor, little more, giving a little more expression to tokenism. While your vote should weigh in this reality, it should also transcend the issue of race and gender. It must include the vast possibilities of the qualities anybody would bring to this office. When I speak of diversity, I'm speaking of the expanded thinking, diverse creativity, mannerisms by which we speak. Listen, I am referring to how we work as a commission, but even more potent, how we address and communicate to the community, to the public. I'm speaking of the various options citizens have that endures those who choose to express concerns or dissatisfaction, to leave here feeling heard. I am also speaking of the ability to communicate with businesses and other entities in our cities where people of diverse backgrounds and experiences feel a sense of intelligent and collegial representation when they agree or disagree. The vice mayor needs to be someone who has the strength to listen well, a little charisma, someone who is aware of the issues, clear of their position, but more importantly, someone who is hospitable in their nature, friendly in their disposition, and ability to engage conflict where people leave feeling cared for. Such diversity should be expected of all of you representing our city, but even more of our mayor and our vice mayor. Given the police department and fire department are the two most cost-worthy expenses in our city, it's helpful to have a commissioner who has experiences in these areas. When I have opportunity to engage a friendly and competitive race with anybody, in one minute, thank you, Mayor, you're doing a good job, including running against you as mayor, which I appreciated the opportunity. While I engage the community, the one thing that was consistent, many people didn't even know, as you said earlier, who was the mayor or vice mayor. Black, white, Hispanic, Native, what I found, one consistent, people knew Eric Hood. They knew Eric Hood. I want you to be clear in referring that citizens of all locations are aware of Eric Hood. I was surprised. Often, even as a candidate, if I had questions about what was going on, there's two people I always got an answer from, Ann Cummings and Eric Hood. Eric brings a form of diversity to the commission that is hospitable to people regardless of their race, background, intelligence, lack thereof. He is neither loud nor outspoken, choosing not to dominate others, but he is knowledgeable and engaging to all who are ready and willing to listen. It is my understanding that you have the privilege to make that decision, which you have made already. I want to share that I think that it's not, it's not simply an expression of voting for Eric as vice mayor, it's a statement to the community. You want more people to come and participate, things need to happen to say, listen, we're ready for newness, we're ready for something different. And when you do that, you will set the stage not only for others to participate, but you will set the stage for a new development and a new direction for our city. I want you to know that I appreciate all of you for your leadership, I appreciate all of you for your determination to serve us, but I want you to know that I believe as a consultant, we really need help in talking about issues of race. We don't know how to talk about it, and when we do, we try to downplay with the words unity. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Abiata. Are there any other members? Please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Ramos in 2462 South Getty. On behalf of Ramos Towing, David and I and the employees humbly thank you for the contract.
Are there any other members? If not, Commissioner Hood? If not, Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Any in office?
Seconding the chairman.
Oh, that was you?
Yeah.
Willie, Willie.
Oh, okay.
I'm getting used to him.
All right.